Alright, everyone calling this meeting to order of the Kamaki Neighborhood Board. Welcome to everybody here at the library and online. It is now 6:30 PM, so we will get started on our agenda. First off, city-state monthly reports, three minutes each. First off, the Honolulu Fire Department, are you online? Do we have the Honolulu Fire Department? Okay, not yet, so we will move on to the Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good evening. Lieutenant Nishimura from HPD District 7, East Honolulu. The following are the statistics for the month of August. Motor vehicle theft, seventeen. Burglary, four. Theft, twenty-seven. UEMV, eighteen, with total calls for service, six thousand five hundred and fifty-three. Our safety tip for the month is flash flood preparedness as we're heading into the wet time of the year. There are three things to watch out for with regards to the flash flood. There are three advisories, there's a watch, warning, and advisory. Of those, the warning is, when the warning is issued, that means the flooding is occurring or will develop very quickly, so that is the one to really be aware of. Things you need to know with regards to flash flood. First, learn the best routes of escape if you are in an area prone to flooding. Make sure that you have a kit ready to go, an emergency kit ready to go with your valuables, paperwork, medicines, extra clothing, that kind of thing. Please do not allow your children to play in any flood zones during a flash flood emergency. Also, and most importantly, please do not try to cross either in vehicle or on foot an area that is flooding. You are in danger of being swept down river. But that's our report for the month, thank you.
Alright, thank you Lieutenant. Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department, first off from the board? Oh, okay, Becky, do you have your hands up?
Yes, I do, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Hello, Officer, I actually opened up an email. I don't usually read every email from this neighborhood watch group up on Mauna Loa, but I just happened to open it today. And there was a report about how he was asking the people in the group if they had these notes in his mailbox that said "Help me", and it almost looked like it was written in a child's handwriting, and it was in red ink on slips of paper. And this person wrote that it showed up like periodically, maybe three times, and we saved this slip of paper and it said "Help me", and the question to the group is like, has any other neighbors or anyone else had this? And he checked with his own neighbors and they didn't have it. So I tried to respond, but I'm not like, I don't know, I couldn't reply to the Google Groups or whatever, so it bounced back. But my recommendation was that they file a police report. So because I couldn't connect with them again with that, I thought, you know, we have meetings, so I'm gonna make sure you are aware. And maybe if you put in chat your email, I could forward you the email. But I think it's just at least very important to have the police report made because if this is serious, then there would be a record. I don't know, if you have any other recommendations?
Yeah, no, you're a hundred percent correct. In a case like that, please make a police report, file a police report, request to speak with an officer, so the officer can get all the facts regarding the incident. Also, what's going to be important is we're going to want to also recover that note itself, and then we'll be able to, if needed, we can test it or we can look at it, but that's something that will be important for our investigation. It may turn out to be, you know, a practical joke or whatever, but we don't want to just assume that. And we want to be able to follow up in case there are any other incidents in the area, but not only in your area, the Kamaki area, maybe it could be occurring someplace else like in Manoa or, you know, somebody says that you wouldn't have access to that information, but we would. So yeah, so very important, a hundred percent correct, and all they have on officers respond.
Just for the edification of everyone here, it was Edna Street that was referred to, Edna. But I will, if you put a good email in the chat, I will forward to you this email so you guys have it. But like I said, I wasn't able to respond to them, so I, you know, I just thought it's good information for the public here to know as well.
Got it, thank you.
Thanks, Officer.
Alright, thanks Becky. Any other questions for the board members? Any questions for the public, online or in person? Alright, seeing none, thank you very much Lieutenant, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Great, thanks for joining us. Okay, our next report is from the Board of Water Supply. Lorna, are you on?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening, I just have an announcement, a quick announcement for this month. We have Imagine a Day Without Water, so we've got to make sure you folks get ready for the annual Imagine a Day Without Water event on Saturday, September 28th, and that's going to occur from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Kapolei Regional Park. The Border Water Supply and various other city, state, and community agencies are going to be there for a full day of focusing on the value of water. We're going to have interactive exhibits, including rain barrel workshops, zero escape plant craft activities, succulent mini workshops and more, and there is also going to be food available for purchase, and most importantly, it is free and it's open to all ages, Kiki to Puna. And if you've got more information, you can find out on our website at www.borderwatersupply.com. That is my quick announcement for the month, does anybody have any questions?
Alright, any questions for Lorna, Border Water Supply from the board? Yep.
Lorna, were there any water main leaks in our neighborhood that we need to be aware of?
Yeah, I did check that, I didn't see any in this for the past month, so.
There was one on Mauna Loa a couple of weekends between 10th and 11th Avenue and Mauna Loa.
Oh, interesting, okay, well, they didn't, they didn't put that down, so I apologize, but I will ask them, that was a couple of weeks ago, on which street?
Excuse me, Lorna? I live on Mauna Loa, and I think in the last two and a half weeks, there was one on Mauna Lea.
Mauna Lea, okay.
And a few days later on my street, Mauna Loa and 11th Avenue, and then just recently, maybe two, three days ago, there was one further down Mauna Loa around maybe 7th Avenue. So there were like three, I know in my area, and I didn't have water all day for one day.
Sorry, apologize for that, sorry for that, you know what?
The crew, the crew came out quite readily though, but they went into the night, you know.
Wow, okay, I've experienced that, yeah. Unfortunately, I've experienced that too, so yeah, it's not fun when you want to go turn the faucet on and nothing comes out. But you know, I think if that was occurring in September, because we are September 18th, if it did occur during September, that's why I wouldn't have on the report. But I'll double check to make sure nothing in August was occurred, and then if there was, I'll let you folks know next month.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions for the Border Water Supply from the board?
My name is Gerald, I actually live on Palolo side of the street, but I do have a question for Border Water Supply. So we have, we have water main breaks all the time, Kamaki and Palolo side. I grew up on Kamaki, I currently live in Palolo. And while the water main breaks are fixed, what are we doing long-term to solution this so that we don't constantly have the breaks?
Oh, that is a great question. I want to get you an official answer, but I know we are always constantly working to make sure there are other, you know, we're proactive on that. But like I said, I'm going to take your question, and then I am going to make sure I get a quick answer to give to you, and next, next, next month if that's okay. But I do, I do know that they are working on it, so there is, you know, not, it's not, it's not being neglected. But it just happens, age-wise, the main breaks always just happen, and construction, anything can cause a main break.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions for the Border Water Supply? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Lorna, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for the updates. So I'm going to circle back for the Honolulu Fire Department. Is anyone online for the Honolulu Fire Department? So we're going to move on then to public input. So this is an opportunity for the public to raise issues and concerns not listed on the agenda. Because it's not on the agenda, however, the board cannot take any formal action for this particular meeting on that. So I do understand there's probably a number of people here for the bus route on Aloha Avenue, but before we get to that, I just wanted to check if there's any other public input this evening on any other issue. Any public input on issues other than Aloha? Yeah, Franklin, go ahead.
There may have been a mayor's press release very recently regarding the deadline fast approaching, September 30th, for the real property tax credit application season. And this is a program that has been around for twenty-plus years, and the season goes from July 1st to September 30th. And it's for eligible homeowners to get a credit or discount against their property tax for next year. You can go to honolulu.gov/treasury to look at the information brochure, and you can download the application or do a, do a fillable application. You can pick up hard copies of the application and information brochure at the satellite city halls and Hawaii State Library System. And the hard deadline for September 30th is for receiving the hard, signed hard copy of the application, other documents that would be needed such as income documents, there's a more grace period for that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Franklin. Any other community inputs aside from Aloha Avenue at this time? Okay, if not, so I would invite anyone here for Aloha Avenue and the bus route, if you have any comments with respect to that, feel free to give some public input.
Hi, yes, good evening, my name is Leo Lani Iwaki. I'm a resident on Aloha Avenue, and we, I know, I know, first of all, can we, can we ask that this be, the discussion be stated for next, your next Neighborhood Board meeting?
Yes, we can put it out there for the next meeting.
I just want to say that, that, you know, everything came as a surprise. We did have in our Neighborhood Board meeting last week with, we did have a meeting with Roger Morton and John Noochi showed up there, and we were told that we were all notified that supposedly there are about 200 letters that went out. Out of all the doors that we've knocked on, about three, three people received out of everyone that we knocked on the doors. So evidently, those 200 letters didn't get out. It's very dangerous, what they did, it came very quickly, you know, like, it really showed up without prior warning, and which really, really affects our whole neighborhood. There are blind spots, it's very dangerous where that bus is going to, especially 6th Avenue and Aloha, you have, one side has a, has a sidewalk, the other side does not. And where the bus stops are, we're finding that now, when those bus stops are now, they're attracting the elderly and the people on wheelchairs, where they really should not be on Aloha because it's a very fast-moving street. Fast-moving, you've got KCC, you've got people coming off of 6th Avenue, they're flying. We got people coming down Hayden Street, we've got people coming up, I mean, going up Hayden Street, coming down 10th Avenue. Where we live is right at that corner, so we see everything. We see what's coming down both sides of the hills from KCC and 6th Avenue, what comes down 10th Avenue and what goes up Hayden because we're right there. So we're right in the middle, where we live, right in the middle of that whole, all the, all the action that takes place on that street. Again, it's very dangerous because with that showing up, it attracts all of the people that really should not be on the street, especially the side that does not have a sidewalk, and not all the corners are ADA. So you've got wheelchairs, motorized wheelchairs on, on the, traveling on the street, they shouldn't be on the street because of the fast-moving vehicles. So, you know, anyway, oh, okay, well, there's a boat too. Yeah, there's a lot of abandoned vehicles, so yeah. Anyway, I don't want to go over my time, but yes, okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks very much. Others for Alani?
Yes, my name is Wanee W, and I live right on Aloha, near one of the blind spots, I'm kind of at the top of, you know, a dip. And so I've seen a lot of very dangerous things occurring, accidents and so forth. But what I'm concerned about also is the process. I mean, there was no prior notification or hearing regarding the rerouting. So people I have talked to, bus riders, are kind of upset that Route 9 is being taken away because they used to be able to take that route to go where they wanted to go, like Kapuolani or Dillingham. Now, or even my neighbor across the street, her son goes to Kalani High School, now he has to transfer. So there was not any kind of a survey, you know, I was talking to my 95-year-old neighbor who lives in Okeli Street near Leahie, and she's saying, you know, they should have done a survey, this is a 95-year-old lady, right? And I know from planning courses I've taken, yeah, public consultation or consultation with the community is the first step you take before you do something like implementing a new bus line into a community. The other thing that concerned us is the danger. I mean, I think that's the main overriding factor. There's no way you can fix those two dips, those two blind spots. And apparently, I don't know how aware the planning department was, but I don't think they were aware, because after that meeting, it was evident they were not aware of this, these dangers. I mean, if you just look at the map, it kind of makes sense in terms of efficiency, straight line and all of that, that you would go along that route to get to KCC or whatever, but if you're actually on the street and you're going like that, it's a totally different story. And so what we're concerned about is what is the process? And furthermore, what can we do about it? I mean, is it like a done deal and we just come here and complain and nothing gets done? Or is there some kind of formal process, you know, I'm not familiar enough with, that we can take in terms of being able to, to really require that these proper measures be done prior to the implementing of this bus line as a permanent route? Because I understand that they are looking at it. So prior to making this a permanent route, there has to be some kind of consideration as to the safety factors, the bus ridership, in terms of where the bus riders want to go. And she was saying, why do, you know, why do I now, instead of having to walk half a block to where I used to take the bus, now have to go down all the way to that dusty, you know, unsafe street to take the bus? And she's 95 years old, she just gave up her driver's license, so she's going to be a new bus rider. And this is baffling to someone like, you know, to someone like her. So, you know, we want to know as residents, what can we do? I mean, what can you do to help us? Is it a resolution? Is it some kind of petition drive? Is it some kind of, because we're willing to do that. I mean, we're going to go the route to take this, to make sure that the proper measures are being, being taken before something like this happens. Because we don't want to see some kind of accident, my neighbor across the street at last week's meeting at the Diamond Head, Kapo Hulu meeting said liability. You know, what liability does the city have for the Department of Transportation Services, for the bus? What liability do they have? Now there are known dangers, and, you know, they say, oh, well, we can put in platforms and all of that. No, that's not the point, okay? There's only so much you can do with the street that we're dealing with here. So, you know, we're here not only to express our concern, but to ask, to seek advice and assistance from you as Neighborhood Board, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Others here for Aloha?
Hi, my name is Sulan Kamakavivo Ole. I live on the Kamaki side of Aloha Avenue. My main concern is, I live kitty-corner from Hayden and Aloha Avenue, and just a few months ago, there was an accident, and a car was coming down towards every direction on Aloha, turning left on Hayden, and a car was coming up, got sideswiped, it spun around, and it was on, not on my property, but where the sidewalk should have been. So one, it's a dangerous area. Two, last week, Thursday, I was behind a bus, following a bus which was speeding on Aloha Avenue. It was going close to 40 miles per hour, in a 25 miles per hour. So I had brought that up, my granddaughter took a picture of the speed, my speedometer, because she was my passenger, but I was following it because I wanted to see the speed it was going at. One, it's a safety issue because my area is all elderly people. I think I'm maybe just the second youngest household on the street, or on mine by 10th and Aloha. But I see elderly people, one, a wheelchair, gets off on the corner of Hayden and Aloha and is crossing the street where we have no crosswalks. Traffic is bad because KCC is up the hill, so speedy, not just kids at the school, what have you, bus drivers, but it's just not safe. Another one was an elderly lady had gotten off the bus, and she was jaywalking because we have no, but she had a hard time crossing the street. She was walking very slowly, so just my main concern is traffic. I don't catch the bus anymore, I used to, but my granddaughter does. So it's not that I don't want the bus, but it's just a bad area on Aloha Avenue, and like, they said that they sent out these notices to houses, we were one that did not receive anything. Had we known, we would have shown up at the Neighborhood Board meetings or whatever meeting that they had, so yeah, thanks.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, anyone else to add any additional information with respect to Aloha, concerns with Aloha and the bus? Anyone? Anyone online? Okay, if not, alright, so as I mentioned, the board is not going to be able to take any formal action this evening, but just a couple of comments on my part. So I can't speak for, you know what, OTS gave in terms of notice to others, but in all fairness to OTS, OTS did give a presentation to the board on the bus route changes several months ago. So again, I'm not sure, you know, what other outreach was given, but just so that you're aware of that. I think what we'll do is we will ask the city representative, you know, when he comes online this evening, to see if we can perhaps get someone from OTS to attend the next board meeting, so that we can get, you know, some information from the OTS representative as well as, you know, the concerns can be directly addressed to OTS as well. So, you know, I'd suggest that as a next step, but again, this evening, we're not going to be able to take any formal action on it, but we'll continue to look at that. Alright, Audrey, go ahead.
Really, thank you for coming out, I did not know about the bus route. I live on Mauna Loa, but I take that Aloha quite frequently, I've lived in Kamaki for 30 years, so to go down to Diamond Head Grill and, you know, Waikiki, I take that route a lot of times. I wanted to say, a few years ago, I wrote a letter, another thing I think Aloha is dangerous is, there's no like dividing line in the middle, there's no white line in the middle. And whenever I take that, people do speed, you know, there's no stop signs, so people speed from 6th Avenue all the way up to KCC or vice versa. And it's scary, because I see people going over their half of the road. So I wrote a letter to the city, I remember, an email, and they said that, something about the mid, what do you call that, the side, there's not enough, is that the side, what do you call it, the, the road and then the, the city, yeah, is that what it's called, the embankment? Where the city owns that land, but not enough to widen the road in order to put that white line in the middle. That's what they told me at that time, those few years ago, 2017. Yeah, I know, I see that, and I know I experienced that too, it's scary, and then I start driving on the dirt side, you know? But anyway, I just wanted to add that factor. I can't imagine with a bus now, buses, and no line in the middle, because the buses are wider. Yes, right, yeah, so I can imagine how frightening that is, yeah. Anyway, I just wanted to add that, there's no, no median lines, very scary.
Alright, thanks very much, yes ma'am. You know, I don't specifically recall Aloha, but I do know that they did show some maps and maybe some schematics, right, of kind of where the routes would be. But again, I don't specifically recall Aloha on that. The other thing I think, you know, we'll do is, you know, I'll reach out to the Kapo Hulu Neighborhood Board Chair, because I understand, you know, the concerns were expressed with the Kapo Hulu Neighborhood Board as well. So, you know, hopefully we can, you know, kind of coordinate that a little bit and see, you know, what we can do. Okay? Again, thank you very much for coming out.
Two quick questions. What bus route number, and when did it start? Route number 200 of September, oh, okay, August. Okay. Because then you can look on the Google and find out, and you know, the bus has the route number and stuff like that, so you can do that, thank you.
Alright, okay, thank you very much, thanks again for coming out, appreciate all the comments. Alright, any other community concerns this evening? If not, okay, so we'll go ahead and move on. Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, yeah, sure, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Estrida Pazentiner, I live on Campbell and Herbert. And I was, got involved for the first time going to the Manoa Mayor's meeting in April, and I addressed the scenario on my street. By the way, the traffic has become terrible recently, I mean, it's terrible. So everyone's flying down Piluaia, Aloha, Mauna Loa, I used to live on Mauna Loa, and it's atrocious, it's, I get a lot of the tourists, actually, and honking and all that. But anyway, I address the fact that there are these chronic homeless guys, I don't want to say that they're the homeless that are seeking help, but they're basically the ones that are mentally ill and high on drugs, and they are on the backside of the Episcopal Church and preschool. And I address that, you know, they've also, there have been times where my neighbor and her daughter were walking in the daylight and somebody revealed themselves, and after the Manoa meeting, the mayor and several police and Ian Ross and Ikaika, they all, you know, came to me and talked to me about it and assured me, of course, when I'm discussing nude men in a school, that's a problem. So they addressed it, I felt I was heard, and he told me, I think, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, I thought it was Lloyd, but anyway, he said, call right away, and I did, I'm like, I've been taking on this neighborhood watch superhero scenario where I at night go out there and I've saved dogs, I, I mean, I've called my, you know, HPD, they've been great. And I called HPD on August 5th, it was Sunday, 5:00 PM, and I was chilling, I was defrosting my freezer and I was in a bathing suit, I think I was gonna, I had no intention of going outside. And there was this, this guy down there on the backside who was belligerent and yelling, and what the other problem is, is that women and their children are, you know, he's there with a shopping cart, taking up the whole sidewalk, and they're, you know, afraid, and they walk around onto Campbell Avenue facing oncoming traffic and putting themselves in danger for this person. And he is belligerent, and I called HPD, and they come right away, and I, I'm like cheering them on from my window, I'm across the street, and they make one guy leave and they leave the belligerent guy. So I ignore it, because I've already waited an hour, I'm trying not to get involved, but of course, I hear yelling again, and now... And now this local guy confronts him because he's got his pants off. And that was it. I called nine-one-one emergency and I said, I'm, I'm going to go handle this then. And I go downstairs, of course, in my head, I'm going to, you know, save the world. And my roller derby, you know, Signia was back on. But I get down there and I, I yell at him, but I say, you need help. You need, this is not okay. And I push the cart forward two feet and he tackles me like Bill Romanowski on crack. And I am on, I'm a big girl. I'm German, six foot. I'm not even going to say how much I weigh, but I'm telling you, I was, I was almost impressed by this guy's strength. But he's like one forty and I was bigger than him. I was, I was down. I couldn't get up. It was like the worst position to be in. And he came back to attack me. And this, thank God, this hero ran across the street. This is five-thirty on a Sunday and tackled him off of me. The police show up back and they were the ones that had just left, literally four minutes. And I, I asked, I said, were you the ones that were just here? And I didn't have a very great experience with the, with, I call him the rookie. But he treated me like I was the criminal. Ends up this guy had a warrant. He did get arrested for indecent exposure. The rookie did not put assault, even though an ambulance came. I was bleeding from my knees down, although I'm so like shocked that I didn't feel really the neck and back, you know. He, he took me down, I'm not kidding. And this is, this is where we live and Kapuna walked there and children. This is not okay. He has over forty-three arrests in just two years. And that's just the beginning. This, this was the whole wake-up call for me that unfortunately is getting involved because I want my neighborhood to be safe, my community. I'm born and raised here. And this is just, this is atrocious. This guy came from the mainland on one-way ticket. I mean, I'm finding out more as we go. Ten days later, I'm at Kahala at the Aloha Gas Station, getting oil in my car after a long day. And I'm like, oh, five minutes from home, I can't wait. And I was violently attacked again. Must be my lucky, my lucky month. I was ambulanced out. I fought like it was for my life. I boxed a bad roller derby.
I apologize for interrupting you. These are very serious issues and very serious issues. But, you know, we, since we have other agenda items, I'm going to need to ask you to summarize it.
Okay, that's basically, I spent a week in the hospital fighting an infection from this attack. She had twenty-eight arrests. She almost killed an eighty-nine-year-old man in Florida. So I just want to address this to the community because I want my neighbors and especially women and children. I, I want to protect them because I wasn't protected when I was younger. And that was, that's it. I'll be addressing this again with the mayor and everybody. You're going to see this on social media and in the media because all I have is my voice. And I don't feel safe in my community or the community I grew up in. It was between Kahala and Kapo Hulu. So thank you for listening, but yeah, not happy.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate it. Okay. Becky, do you have a quick comment? We're going to have to move on.
Yes, I do, absolutely. Just in the spirit of what we discussed with HP earlier, I just wanted to recommend that she file a police report and get all this written because I think it'll be helpful for the police to have the history. So if she hasn't done that, and I've done that in the past myself. I've written up complaints like a year after just to know that it's in there. And then an incident comes up, then they have the history for later prosecution. That's all, thank you.
The gentleman that did not put assault, I was arguing the court case was clear. And so now when he gets called, because he sleeps right outside of my apartment. So I get to see this guy every night.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear any of that, but I just, just wanted to recommend that you get it in writing, maybe write it on your own and then submit it as an attachment when you file a police report. I'm out, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Becky. Thank you. Thank you again for coming out. Okay, so we're going to move on to presentations. I'm sorry, community updates. Thanks, thanks, Jeffrey. So if there are no objections, I understand that Adori Yu has another commitment this evening. So we're going to ask if she's on, if she could go ahead and give us an update on Queen Theater. Adori, are you on? You're on mute.
Sorry about that. Okay, so aloha, everyone. I wanted to let you all know that we've recently welcomed a new tenant to the block, Little Sparrow. So keep an eye out for them in the next few months. They'll be right next door to Yoga Under the Palms on Wyly. And we're excited about the new addition to the neighborhood. I'll drop a link to their Instagram in the chat. And regarding the Queen Theater, we've had several promising meetings recently and are now discussing both joint venture and ground lease options. We haven't received any offers yet. Discussions are still in progress. So I'm afraid I can't say more beyond that at the moment. That said, if you know anyone else seriously interested, I'll also drop my brokers' emails in the chat along with my email. And yeah, thank you for your time. I actually have, yeah, like another meeting right now that was rescheduled at the very last minute. But please email me if you have any questions or concerns. And thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Adori. Thanks for coming out. Appreciate it. I'm glad, yeah, it looks like Adori had to go. So Becky, if you don't mind just chatting or emailing Adori in the comments, okay? Okay, so we're going to move on to the Kamaki Business and Professional Association is Ivan. Or is Tu on? Heck, if not, we'll move on to Kapialani Community College. It's Carol. I see Carol.
Yes. Good evening, Chair, members of the board and community members. This is Carol Hostel from Kapialani Community College. Good evening. I just wanted to give you a quick update, let you know that progress is being made at the Culinary Institute of the Pacific and hopefully the Innovation Center would be finished by the end of the calendar year. I believe that the restaurant, you know, is, is going to be pushed out for completion probably into March of twenty twenty-five. And hopefully the auditorium will be completed somewhere in between those two dates. Also want to let you know that I have started running community interest courses again. And so I will put the website address into the link so you can go and check our continuing education. We are running classes such as Hula, which filled up like within a day. So I'm going to have to schedule another one. But we're doing Zumba and Tai Chi, Ikebana, and a whole lot of community interest type courses for health and wellness in addition to the workforce development courses that we have. So please visit the site. I'm going to put it up and that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much, Carol. Any questions for Carol over at KCC? I have a question, actually, Carol. Have, have you heard any concerns about the bus route? Because it, it does service KCC.
Yes, you know, of course, our students have expressed concerns about that among, you know, some other issues. I can talk with our student government people and see if they have, you know, some data on that. But we, it has been brought up certainly because it impacts our students.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Carol over at KCC? All right, not seeing any. Thank you very much, Carol. Appreciate all the updates. Okay. So let's see. So we're gonna, let me just circle back to Kamaki Business and Professional Association. Anyone online for that? If not, we will move on to presentations. First up is Hawaii Bicycling League. And we have our good friend Eric McCutcheon. Eric.
All right, take a little stretch, everyone. Come on. Yeah, I taught elementary, so I know. All right, so we have been studying micro-mobility and mass transit for the past year. And it is time for our written test. So get a little piece of paper, number one through ten, and get ready for the test. By the way, no extra credit and no retest. This is it. Okay, one through ten, come on. I don't see everyone writing their one through ten down. All right, but before we start, of course, we have this commercial break. Coming up in about, next slide, ten days is the Honolulu Century Ride. Yes, get on your bikes and join a thousand of your favorite people. They'll ride a hundred miles or less, turn around anywhere you want. In about ten days, hopefully it's going to be good weather. All right, here we go. Number one. Is ARSL required for monowheels? So again, a reminder, ARSL, registration, safety inspection, insurance, license for the device, license for the operator. Is ARSL required for monowheels? Write down your answer so you don't just like, oh, yeah, that's what I was going to say. Write down your answer. Answer is no. There's nothing in the law about monowheels. They can go anywhere they want, do anything they want and just watch out for them, okay? Again, let's all be safe on the road. Number two. What is the maximum speed for a Segway or Segway-type device on the sidewalk by Hawaii law? Absolutely. In fact, there's a name, maximum speed, and write down that number. Answer is eight miles an hour. All right, they can go eight miles an hour by law here in Hawaii. Number three. What is the registration fee for an electric foot scooter? How much if you have one of those? Does it cost to register? No. If it's a device called electric foot scooter, you will pay thirty dollars. All right. And all the three out of three people are like, yeah, I got this. Number four. All right, the bicycle helmet, it is law until what age here in Hawaii? If you said sixteen, you are correct. All right, so once you turn sixteen, those kids, they just throw those helmets away and be cool and get back on their bikes. I hope not. All right. Number five. Bicycle, e-bicycle and moped registration money is deposited into what fund? I wish. Not the Eric Fund. The Bike Way Fund, the Bike Way Fund. So again, bikes, e-bikes, mopeds, we are paying money to maintain our streets. All right. And other money helps to keep us all safe on streets as we need. Number six. All right, maximum speed for a moped? It helps define what a moped is as different from an electric bike, as different from a motorcycle? Maximum speed for mopeds? Ooh, I think I heard it. Thirty miles an hour. All right, you writing these down? You grading yourself here? All right. Number seven. Are motorcycles allowed to split lanes in Hawaii by law? So split lanes, basically right on the line, maybe between two cars that are going too slow, kind of go between cars. Split lane, what they call splitting the lane. Are you allowed to do that in Hawaii? No, I know we got that one right. Yeah, no, not allowed to do that. But you're allowed to ride on the shoulder because you can't split lanes. You are allowed to ride on the shoulder if there's more than two lanes going with no traffic moving at the time. But anyway, number eight. NEVs, neighborhood electric vehicles, can travel on roads with up to what posted speed limit? Awkward way to say that, but I made a mistake last month, so I got to fix it. So those little neighborhood like glorified, you know, golf carts, but they're legal. Up to what speed limit marked roads? Thirty-five miles an hour. Though by law, they're limited to travel at only twenty-five miles an hour by engine, but they can go on thirty-five posted roads. So unlike last month where I made a mistake, morning up, can they go on Cal Highway? Yes, thirty-five, posted thirty-five. All right, number nine. True or false, K cars have special ARSL in Hawaii? So again, registration, safety, insurance, license for the driver, license for the device. Again, K cars, right-hand drive, imported. Special ARSL for them? No, just the regular, just like any old car. Again, though they're not quite like any old car, but nope, they're just in the same branch as an individual car. All righty, now, put this reminder in your head. We're doing all this and doing all this to encourage people to think about micromobility and mass transit as an alternative to one person in one car going especially one, two or three miles an hour. So there's lots of ways to word this next question. But in the spirit of what we're learning here, number ten. Which transportation modality is the most efficient use of space on the road? Which transportation? There's a little hint in the corner there. Which? No. That's a good one in many ways. Yes, my answer tonight for all of us is the bus. Okay, is the bus. So mass transit in this case, most efficient use of space on. All righty, count up your correct answers. How did you do? Well, next slide. How did you do? Anything between zero and ten is totally fine because which law is protecting us every day? Anyway, not that maybe you haven't seen it this way, but law of the splinter paddle, okay? Going back before Hawaii revised statutes. All right, everyone has the right to be safe on Hawaii's roads. Just another way of looking at how to live aloha and share our roads and be careful with everyone, no matter how they're moving on our roads. Everyone has the right to be safe. All right, next month, the street test. All right, the street test, the driving test. Be ready. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric. Appreciate it. Looking forward to the next task, next month. All right. Okay, thanks very much. Okay, so we will move on to a presentation by Hawaii Energy on the Small Business and Nonprofit Programs. Sophia Summers.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sophia and I am super grateful to be here tonight. Thank you so much, Brian and the board, for having me. I'm going to do a quick presentation on who Hawaii Energy is and a couple of awesome programs that we have that I think Kamaki can particularly benefit from. I'm a previous Kamaki resident and I'm here really because I love this community and I want to see businesses here, you know, get the most out of our program so that way they can save the most that they can on their electricity bills. So can I get a quick show of hands of who here has heard of Hawaii Energy before or has participated in our programs? Yeah, all right, so a couple of you. So I work in the commercial office in retail sector. However, I'm here mostly to talk about like our primary purpose and two programs in particular. Could you please go to the next slide? Thank you. Okay, so Hawaii Energy was born about ten years ago because of the state's clean energy targets that we're trying to reach a hundred percent clean energy by twenty forty-five. And we do that by empowering island families and businesses to make smart energy choices by providing you guys with resources, not only educational but financial. Next slide. And we have three primary program pillars. Accessibility and affordability, clean energy technologies and economic development and market transformation. I'm only going to be focusing on accessibility and affordability today and the two programs that we have that are very inclusive. that we have that are very inclusive and getting money into the hands that need it. Next slide. All right, so our Empower Grant and our Energy Advantage programs really target small businesses and nonprofit organizations. Our Empower Grant is a tiered grant structure where we reimburse energy-efficient qualified projects based on what the efficiency is. So we have like a 500, a 3,000, a 4,000, and now $6,000 tier structure, whether it's going to be, you know, installing an AC unit, adding to your building envelope, redoing your, let's see, refrigeration, or if you have a commercial kitchen that you're trying to retrofit with new Energy Star appliances, we have a grant for that right now. And it is a competitive grant. It is only available while funding lasts and on a first-come, first-served basis. So we're really excited because that just opened up for this year, August 1st. And the other program we offer is our No to Low Cost Direct LED Lighting Retrofit Program. So if you are a small business and you are qualified, I'll go over the qualifications here in a second. You can get a free LED lighting retrofit or have it be available to you at a very, very reduced price, just depending on the scope, because the contractor runs the bill for that, and we reimburse the contractor. So next slide, please. So how to find out if you're eligible? Well, because every single HECO ratepayer, whether you're here on Oahu or Maui or Big Island, you pay into a public benefits fee every single time you pay your electric bill. So 1% of that, let's just say, goes towards this energy efficiency funding stream, where we manage that and we redistribute it to the community. So if you're a restaurant, or if you are on a Schedule G or Schedule J account using less than 30 kilowatts a month, if you are a multifamily property, you have common aerial lighting that you're looking to retrofit, or if you are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, then you'd be eligible. And down below there in the little boxes, that's the steps. We just verify your eligibility. You would reach out to a contractor that we have on our website who's familiar with our program, who is already qualified, and we make sure that they're licensed and insured. They come out and they do a free assessment. You get to see if you like what they propose, and then if all goes good, then they do the install and you get to enjoy your new life and your reduced electricity bill. Next slide. And I want to focus in on the boxes down at the bottom. This hasn't been updated because our last program year just closed in June, but as of last year, we've had over 6,000 small businesses take advantage of our Energy Advantage Program, which has accumulated to 9.6 megawatts, being reduced from the grid during peak demand stress periods, which can average out to about $3,150 in annual bill savings per project. So if you are an entrepreneur or a small business owner, you know, a nonprofit, I just want you to take a second and think about, you know, applying for this and seeing what you could do with an additional $3,000 in your pocket next year. Next slide. And so this is what you would want to do if you are thinking that you're qualified. Worth your questions. It's on our website, hawaiienergy.com/findacontractor. You can check out who is available as a clean energy ally by either searching their name, or you can search by island, by what service you're looking for, and whether or not you're residential or a business. We do have a lot of residential programs. I'm just focusing on this right now. Next slide. And oh, also, a great thing about that particular page of our website is that that's where you can also go to apply for our Empower Grant and get the ball rolling to find a contractor for our Empower Grant. And right here are the eligible, eligible project types for our grant. We have refrigeration equipment, packaged or split ACs, we have DC inverter, window ACs, Energy Star commercial kitchen equipment, solar water heaters, window film, just helps, you know, with solar reflectivity, keeping it cooler on the inside. And we have had, in just 20-ish days of this being open, over 100 applicants. We're really excited. We want to get as many applicants as we can. This money belongs to you, and we are very eager to redistribute it back to our communities. So if you know a small business owner who you think could benefit from getting, you know, a new oven or a new freezer or new AC, just please have them reach out to us and check out our website. I also have some pamphlets and brochures right over here along with my business card and our restaurant booth card. Next slide. And just like Energy Advantage, Empower falls under the same similar eligibility requirements. So if you're a small business, you're on a Schedule Rate G, if you, if your business is less than 5,000 square feet, if you're a restaurant or a nonprofit. And those that are not eligible, unfortunately, are businesses that are registered under our account, which is a residential grade schedule. So unfortunately, no at-home offices. But please take a look at our website. We have a full list of all of our eligible projects on there. Next slide. Okay, and yeah, if, if you're like, yeah, this sounds like me, I'm excited, I want some money. What you want to do is go onto our website and, sorry, is there feedback? You want to fill out our commercial incentive application and provide us with a current 2024 IRS Form W-9. We have it available for you, so you don't have to go searching through your archives. And then proposal, spec sheets, all the contractors can give that to us. Yeah, if you have any questions, I would love to make myself available to you after the meeting, or you are more than welcome to grab my business card right over there. Yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sophia. Appreciate it. Thanks for the presentation information. Okay, so we, our next presentation is from Hawaii Green Growth, which is Follow the Drop Program. And is Sage on?
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Just bring, perfect, okay. Aloha, everybody. Thank you for the chair and board and community members for having me. My name is Sage Ranon. I am an intern at a nonprofit called Hawaii Green Growth. I work specifically under the initiative called Follow the Drop, so that's what I'm going to be talking about today. You can go to the next slide, please. So with this initiative and this project, we have three main goals that we're trying to achieve. The first one is to reduce the amount of brown water runoff that's coming from properties. So this is the runoff that's coming from rainwater, and it's running over hard-scape areas like the roof or your driveways. It's collecting solids, pollutants, dirt, all kinds of grime that could then get into nearby waterway systems like streams and eventually ending up in our ocean. So it's contributing to water pollution. So we really want to try and mitigate that as much as possible. The second one is to reduce the amount of flooding that property owners may be experiencing. And the last one is to recharge our underground aquifers where we are getting 100% of our drinking water from here on the islands. So we want to get as much stormwater into the ground, filter it through the ground naturally and into our aquifers where we're getting our drinking water from. Go to the next slide. Thank you. So I work and our team work specifically within the Oahu watershed. From Mauna Kea to Makai, we have about 11 neighborhoods that we are working in. And we are the third of its kind, meaning that there are two other projects in different watersheds in Oahu who are doing the same thing. We are just specifically working in the Oahu watershed. And the body of water that we are trying to protect is the Oahu Canal. Okay, next slide, please. So what we work with is this app also called Follow the Drop. It was created by 3R Water, Rock Ecological, so in collaboration with the city and county. So in the next slide, I'll tell you a little bit more about it. So what we do is come out and do these free assessments for property owners using the app. We can use the app to determine how much stormwater, rainwater a property is experiencing. And we can also use the app to know how much runoff is coming from that property. We'll walk around, look at all the different downspouts on the property and any other water outlets there may be. And by the end of it, and you can kind of start going to the next slide, we hope that we can suggest what we call green stormwater infrastructures. So these are things that could help meet all the different goals that I talked about. For an example, a rain barrel or rain catchment would catch that runoff before it hits any storm drains or nearby stream and direct it somewhere else. Some people use it, a lot of people use it to water their lawns or their potted plants, and that helps them with irrigation and lowers their water bill a little bit, or sometimes we're just redirecting the water so it flows somewhere else onto a lawn or something, or it can reach our underground offers like I was talking about. In the next slide, I just wanted to show some different examples that we have come across within the Oahu watershed. So these three middle ones are permeable pavement. It's a type of green stormwater infrastructure. It looks just like regular pavement a lot of the times, but it's much more porous, so it allows the water to seep through. They're very sturdy. The barrels that you see are the rain catchments I was talking about, so people are able to make it very aesthetic on their property while still being useful and effective. And then I believe the last picture is a oil swell. And then you can scroll to the next slide, last one. So this is kind of looking at the GSI effectiveness and how popular the different ones are. So we have found that rain barrels are the most popular, the most amount of people use them from what we've seen. But they don't always do the most, they're not the most effective sometimes, depending on the property. What we actually, being the most effective, if permeable pavement, they have the potential to capture a lot of that stormwater, a lot of that runoff coming off, and they can look very aesthetically pleasing as well as you can see. So you can scroll to the last slide. So I just want to come here and talk kind of about what we're doing, why we're doing it, give people the chance to maybe book an assessment with us. It's all free. And we just wanted to really help the community, and I can answer any questions as well if anybody has any.
All right, thanks very much. Sage, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair and Board for having me.
I think you do have one question from Becky. Becky, do you have a question?
Hi, Sage. Thanks so much for that. I, when you said the semi-permeable, you know, ground, I guess you can say, I've seen pictures of something that I think is what you're talking about, and it was really nice because you could grow grass under it. Is that what that is?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's one of the more popular ones that we've been seeing. They have these big pavers, and it allows the water to still come through while still having a very stable ground. So that's exactly what I'm talking about.
It's kind of like bricks for the ground, but space for the dirt and the grass to grow up through it a little, and it's less hot.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of different, yes.
Yeah, I haven't seen pictures of it, but I haven't seen it in Hawaii, so I just want to like, support that if you can get that going. The other, one other thing I wanted to mention, maybe two or three years ago, I think I drafted it, I can't quite remember, but I'm pretty sure we passed a resolution for trees, heritage trees, and asking our city council to consider introducing measures, resolutions, or ordinances that would encourage the preservation of trees, like a historic tree ordinance of sorts. So someone buys a property and they'll incentivize a way, or they have to pay an extra fee if they're going to cut down a big tree. I don't know if there's anything like that, or if you've heard of it, but it seems like that would be consistent with what you're trying to advance here, and I'm just wondering if, you know, what you think of trees, or if there's something you can do at a policy level to encourage more tree planting and tree preservation and just less concrete. That's all.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Becky. Cyrus, if you want to touch on that, my associate Cyrus is in here, and he might be able to touch on that perfectly.
It's a good question. So thank you, Sage. As Sage was saying, I work with her on this project, and we are working with an organization named Smart Trees Pacific. And they're also working with Trees for Kamaki, who's going to be also planting trees in Palolo. In one of those slides with the examples, there's, the picture on the left was actually that 11th and Harding Rain Guarding that takes all that. So Smart Trees Pacific put it, put that in, and it includes two native trees. So there are some really proactive efforts in that regard, certainly.
Okay.
Thank you, Zach.
All right, so thanks very much. Oh, we do have another question. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Eric speaking. Two questions. One, after the rainwater assessment, do you have money, like the energy assessment, to pay for the recommendations?
That's also a good question. The short answer is no. However, there are grants that are out there that are actually somewhat similar to Hawaii Energy's. There was just a round by UHC Grant that closed applications this Monday, but we've applied to that, and we're hoping to be able to put in a rain guard in at Alii Yolani Elementary School. There is going to be led by Malama Mauna Lua, there will be mini-grants for the residential level scale of these green stormwater infrastructure that'll be, that's expected this fall. And then there's always the Board of Water Supply's $40 rebates on rain barrels. But right now, we do not have money to fund that.
Okay, when you do, let us know. And second, looking at the Oahu watershed, do you have an official answer on your group's view of Army Corps of Engineer and their proposal?
We don't. We do like to think that our sort of nature-based solutions to ultimately the same kind of challenge that we're all trying to solve for might present itself as an alternative. But otherwise, no, we don't really have any formal stance on their proposal. We're actually not fully sure what the status is on that project right now. But we will be tabling at Hawaii Bicycling League's Century Ride later this fall, so shout out, Eric.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, all right. So thanks very much again for the presentation, the information. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on the agenda to the discussion and consideration of a resolution urging the legislature to adopt good government reforms. Before we get into the discussion on that, I did want to disclose that I'm going to recuse myself from participation and voting on this particular agenda item. My firm does a fair amount of lobbying in front of the legislature, and I also do some campaign finance work, so just out of an abundance of caution and to avoid any appearance of a conflict, I will recuse myself from this item. So I have the pleasure of passing the gavel to our vice chair, Paul Ho, to conduct this agenda item. Thank you, Paul. Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, moving on, is Maria online with us?
Aloha, I'm here.
Hey, thank you for joining. A couple of quick questions before you start. I understand that you presented this to one of the board members and are presenting it via that conduit, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and are you part, or are you in the neighborhood or the neighborhood board?
No, I'm just part of a coalition of organizations for good governance, yeah.
Okay, okay. Just kind of set it in stage so that people know who's here and who's projecting and where they're coming from, perspective wise. Okay, thank you. Take it away.
Okay, aloha, everyone. My name is Maria Raleigh-Hay, and again, I am a part of a coalition of organizations for good governance led by HOPA, Common Cause, the Clean Elections Coalition, and other organizations. Sorry, if you don't mind, I'll just turn off my video just to avoid the rest of sounding like a robot, because my Wi-Fi because my wifi is not that great. Okay, but thank you so much, Jeffrey, for sharing my presentation. So again, I'll briefly present on our good governance resolution that we are hoping for your support. And I'll just go through it quickly and answer questions that anyone may have at the end. But could I ask you to go to the next slide, please? So basically, the premise of our resolution stems from the people of our communities and the way we see our government and specifically how our legislature is working. So we saw the worst voter turnout, feel that we're not heard and seeing the pay-to-play issues come about. And next slide, next slide, please. And so basically, the overall goal of the resolution is to urge the state legislature to adopt these good governance reform to basically enhance transparency and efficiency, including changes to House and Senate rules and statutory amendments related to campaigns and campaign money. These are reasonable, these are reasonable reforms. And they were recommended by the commission to improve the improved standards of conduct. And I think they convened in 2022. And basically, these amendments address the specific issues that have been identified as barriers to effective governance and citizenship participation based on that commission. Next slide, please. So our hope is that before the 2025 legislation session begin, we are asking the House and Senate at the state legislature to basically adopt these rules and include them in their House and Senate rules. So one of them is that we're asking the committees to immediately release all testimony for public review. And so testimonies should be available twenty-two hours before the hearing and late testimonies available two hours before the hearing at least. The second one is having the committees voting on the disposition of all referred bills. So this doesn't necessarily mean voting on every single bill individually, but committees could do it in slate. So one being measures they'll hear and the other, the measures that they don't plan to host hearings on. The third one is non-fiscal bills shouldn't be referred to finance committees if there is no appropriation involved. The fourth one is that all bills must be circulated for co-sponsorship. What hearing scheduled for bills with sufficient support. So what's sufficient support? This means twenty-five signatures in the House and twelve signatures in the Senate are making up the majority. And then, or the simple majority. And then the last is that amendments must be in written form before voting. Next slide, please. So as for the statutory amendments, we are urging the legislature to pass the following amendments before the, or I guess during the 2025 legislative session. So one of them is banning campaign contributions from state contractors, grantees, leases, associates and their family members. And this basically prevents conflict of interest and undue influence. The second one is to enact a comprehensive public financing option for candidates. So candidates don't need to solely rely on private donations to become a competitive candidate. And then the last one is prohibiting laundering contributions to other campaigns. And this prevents the circumvention of contribution limits. And for the last bullet point, the term limits. So we are also asking to have term limits added as a constitutional amendment on the ballot to basically let the voters decide whether or not we should have term limits. Next slide, please. And yeah, so I guess overall with these, you know, reforms, like I mentioned, we are hoping to again have a transparent, efficient, fair and accountable legislature that really addressed the real needs of their district and also their constituents. And these are some of our expected outcomes. Slides, and the next slide, please. And so again, thank you so much for allowing me to present and I am available for any questions. But we would love to have the Kamaki Neighborhood Board as part of this initiative. So I hope you support our good governance resolution. Thank you so much Chair and Vice Chair and members of the board.
Thank you Maria. At this time, if you could leave that slideshow up, that'd be great because I want to do, I do have some questions, but I want to open up to the other board members first. Are there any board members have any questions this time? Becky online.
Okay, Brian, I want to thank you Chair for, you know, your analysis on recusing yourself because I realize I need to recuse myself as well. I have been a lobbyist for the last four legislative sessions representing nonprofit professional associations, mental health professionals. And so I'm like one of the bad guys because I'm a lobbyist, right? Even though I pretty much paid myself minimum wage. But I am concerned, I'm trying to pivot my business. I have a government advocacy business and I have some subject matter expertise and language access. And I want to contract with government entities to be able to do some of their legal compliance work. But if I do that, I'm not able to make any contributions to any political candidate because I'm a vendor, I'm a contractor with a state office, a state, you know, entity. So the prohibition, and I just had it up, but I lost the tab, but it's HRS eleven dash something. It's that first statutory amendment in your presentation. And I mentioned this to Aria and the others who are advancing this resolution that my only problem with this, and I think if you know my politics, I'm very much like open government and there's not enough access and civic engagement. So I am in favor of this, but I don't want to influence this board to pass it because I need to recuse myself. But I think everyone understands that. However, I think it's important that I alert you because I've had a client who does contract work for the state and he made donations, like a hundred bucks here, a hundred bucks there to different candidates he liked. And then he had to take it all back. Someone made a donation to my campaign. And then she realized, so she's a contractor with can I please finish, please? And I'll just get to the point, please, is that the money had to be sent back and I couldn't make contributions. So I felt like my First Amendment right was stifled in that sense. So my recommendation is to put some language to insert like a reasonable de minimis amount, like maybe a hundred dollars so I could just support a candidate I like and not worry about running afoul of these campaign finance laws. So that would be my recommended amendment. Reasonable de minimis amount for that first statutory amendment that you're asking for. And I'll be recusing myself from the vote, but that would be my recommendation. Thank you for giving me the time, Chair.
Yeah, thanks Becky. I wasn't sure if you were accusing yourself or not. So it sounds like you gave your thoughts, which we appreciate and your insight, which is great. Any other questions from any other board members at this time? Okay, if not, Jeff, can you go to the slide that shows there, therefore, sorry, go down. Keep going. It's the part that's, yeah, here. So Maria, help us understand a little bit because, you know, I'm the ignorant person in the room. So I don't know why you're saying timely public access to testimony, it sounds great. Testimony is available twenty-two hours before hearing and at least two hours for late testimonies. So what is it currently? And you want to move it to this. So my question for these kinds of things is, I don't know. What is the current, why do you want to move it to these new, I'm assuming new timeframes? And that's kind of the, not to go to do details because we're going to go down on the rabbit hole. What's the reasoning behind these amendments, you know?
Yeah, of course. Is it okay if I also address Becky's comments as well with my response?
Sure.
Yeah, and I definitely understand you Becky and I agree with your sentiments. I'm also a registered lobbyist and I, you know, am an advocate for a nonprofit organization. And you know, our hope with this is just to kind of level the playing field. And you know, we know that some individuals may not have the financial resources, even a hundred dollars to contribute. But we still want to, you know, really promote like an equitable landscape for them. So that was kind of just our reason, but I do agree with you with the whole, you know, with the whole being lobbyist thing, especially for nonprofits. Because I'm also on the same, on the same field. But in terms of your questions, I share, of course. So right now, many of the testimonies are not, or some of them are not published, you know, within the twenty-two hour timeframe. I don't know if there is in the House and Senate rules what the timeframe is for them to publish the testimonies. But oftentimes, from what I've seen, especially when advocating for bills, is that we find the testimonies right when the hearing starts. So the hearing could be at nine AM and the testimonies are published at eight fifty-nine AM. And so that doesn't really give us sufficient time to really contribute to the conversation or allow even the public to participate in what the conversation is, especially, you know, when we're seeing late testimonies. Like how do we have meaningful feedback on their testimonies when?
Right, yeah Maria, you get that? And I, I'm not trying to cut you off. That's, I don't want to have that happen. But I don't want to go line by line because we only have a certain timeframe. And I do know we want to get through this and actually try, if possible, have some action on this. Because we've been going for almost thirteen minutes now, just this one year apart. And we don't want to inhibit other people from speaking and participating. Are there any questions or comments I asked before from the board? But are there any concerns from the board at this time?
I, I, hello, yeah. Um, yeah, I'm just thinking about it. I'm sorry, I didn't get much chance to look this over the last few couple of days. But I am on a state licensing board under DCCA. And we don't lobby necessarily, but we do have some, you know, do express some concern sometimes with bills in the legislature, how it affects our industry. So I guess what I'm trying to say, I'm not sure if I'm comfortable at this point and maybe should recuse myself also. Yeah, so recusing.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that being said, we have a resolution being presented. Do we have someone on the board that is willing to make a motion at this time?
With.
Move Kelsey.
Kelsey, hang on real quick. We have a point of order we're trying to clarify.
With the board members that have currently recused themselves with the amount that we have, we have six for quorum. And that's it. Of course, if everyone would need to vote in support to support the resolution. We have exactly six with the recusing of the three individuals.
Thank you. Kelsey, go ahead.
Yeah, I moved to approve the resolution.
So you're moving, you're making a motion to vote or support? Okay, great. Would anyone be willing to second that motion? We have a second? So why don't we just do it real quick by name so we make sure we get the correct six that we do need if we are going to approve this amendment or resolution, excuse me.
Gotcha. So again, the three that have recused themselves, for those that are in the room and online, the board needs to have everybody voting in the same way to either adopt or not adopt the resolution. If a vote isn't met, we could do a second roll call vote, if that's okay, Vice Chair, to just in case anybody would change their mind, if we can go for a decision from there.
Not sure if I need to recuse myself because I work in the public sector. So. I don't know either. If you feel comfortable or safer to do that, then that is your right.
If you do feel it, if you are unaware and you do feel necessary, you could do so. That's totally up to you.
So Franklin, are you recusing yourself or not? Okay, I understand that. Okay, Becky, you have a question or comment?
Yes, I'm trying to find the statute right now. I just had it up, but I lost the tab. I can read you the exact language as to who would be potentially impacted by this provision I was talking about, you know, about the contractors. So bear with me, I'm going to put it in the chat if I can find it. It's like HRS eleven dash something.
Okay, if you could verbalize that, because if you put it in the chat, would be great for people online. But for people in the room and the majority of the board members are in the room, we will not have that information.
I found it.
It would just be, okay, that would just be for contractors, not others that might be impacted that aren't contractors. Because that's a subset of all the people that would be part of that.
Hold on. Prohibited uses, oh shoot.
Sorry, guys, this got a little more complicated than we originally envisioned. So I appreciate your patience as we work through this problem.
Contributions, contributions, sorry, sorry, sorry. Contributions by state and county contractors prohibited. It shall be unlawful for any person who enters into any contract with the state, any of the counties or any department or agency thereof, either for the rendition of personal services, the buying of property or furnishing of any material, supplies or equipment to the state, any of the counties, any department or agency thereof, or for selling any land or building to the state, any of the counties or any department or agency thereof, if payment for the performance of the contract or payment for material, supplies, equipment, land, property or buildings made in whole or in part from funds appropriated by the legislative body at any time legislative body, at any time between the execution of the contract to the completion of the contract to directly or indirectly make any contribution or promise expressly or impliedly to make any contribution to any candidate committee or non-candidate committee or to any candidate or to any person for any political purpose or use or to knowingly solicit any contribution from any person for any purpose.
So Becky, summarize real quick. Anyone that has a financial relationship with should not.
If you have a contract with the, any government agency for the rendition of personal services, property, furnishing of material supplies or equipment, selling land or building, or payment for the performance of a contract or payment for material supplies, then
Becky, I'm just summarizing real quick. It sounds like if you have a financial relationship with a government agency, you should not, or you should recuse yourself from this. I mean, I'm oversimplifying, but that's really what we're talking about, right?
To be made part or in full from funds appropriated by the legislative body.
Okay, Becky, got it. Maria, can you help us a little bit? Is that simple statement I'm making and what Becky's sharing, does that summarize? So if someone has a financial relationship, has money's going back and forth, they should be recusing themselves from this, correct?
I'm actually not too sure what the rules are.
And that's fair, that's fair because we don't either. So we would not ask you of something you don't know or don't have. So that being said, we have three recused, one that will abstain because of unsureness. Sorry, new word. That being said, we do have a motion to move forward. We do have a second. That being said, we have five people who are going to say yes and one that will abstain. That being said, we do not have enough to pass the bill at this time. Lastly, that being said, Becky, maybe me and you and Marie can kind of talk a little bit and perhaps clarify that question as far as ability or comfort level for board members to vote or not.
No.
But we're going to table it for now.
Yeah, my recommendation, because the Neighborhood Board Commission has staff, I think they could probably get an answer to this question real fast and then they can come back to us next week.
Yeah, I'm leaning in that, we'll lean on that resource as well and we'll clarify that. So we may be revisiting this next meeting to perhaps bring it up again or perhaps
I mean, maybe I'll get the green light too and Brian too and Franklin.
Yep, I hear you. Okay, that being said, I will reluctantly pass the gavel back to the chair. But I'm going to hold on to the microphone.
All right, thanks very much, everybody. Okay, so we're going to move on to the elected officials' reports. The time now is eight o'clock PM. Our target is to end the meeting by eight thirty. So apologies in advance for requesting our representatives and officials to summarize to the extent that they can. So our first up is Mayor Rick Blandiardi's representative, Mark Wong. Mark, are you on?
I'm here. Good evening. I'll be very fast. Uh, first up is the mayor's newsletter, and I think the most important things from there that are within, that pertain to this uh neighborhood board are that Honolulu was named the most desirable city to live in the United States. Uh, the other issues are in Y and I, Chinatown, Maui, and in on Pensacola Street. So I'll pass over those in the interest of saving time. Um, two issues to follow up. The first one was a a question to HPD about uh preventing uh situations like the carjacking at Kahala Mall. Uh, the response from HPD is that they would advise motorists to always be aware of the surroundings as they approach their vehicles. Once inside the vehicle, ensure that windows are up and doors are locked. Uh, would be prudent of them to start their engines and proceed to leave the area. Lingering in vehicles is not advised. While driving, always have windows up and doors locked. If approaching your vehicle, you observe suspicious individuals, call nine one one. Stay a safe distance away and do not go to the vehicle. Give the dispatcher a description of the individuals that the responding officers can be done on the look, uh can be on the lookout as they arrive at the scene. Uh, the second issue was a question about the mall mine nature mark mitigation and uh improving the potential, improving the potential fire hazards. I don't think that's right. I'm sorry, efforts to improve the potential fire hazards at Mall Mine Nature Park. I think what they mean is to prevent uh fire hazards. But uh NCO was not able to get a response from uh DPR, but I can tell you from my work at the city that uh DPR is applying for funds for a island-wide um study for uh risks to the park. So um I'm pretty sure that will be underway. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that uh my department did develop a mobile driver license for the Apple platform, which rolled out on August twenty-eighth. And so if you have a a mobile device, you can use that at the TSA checkpoints throughout the United States where they do have an automated kiosk. And if you have any, I I will uh report the issue with the Aloha bus. Um, so uh you don't have to bring that up. But if there are any additional questions, I would be more than happy to take them back.
Great, thanks very much, Mark. Any questions for Mark Wong, the mayor's representative? All right, if not, thank you very much, Mark. Appreciate it. Thanks for the updates. All right, so we're going to move on to Councilmember Tommy Waters' office.
Aloha, Chair. This is Adam Du from uh Council Chair Tommy Waters' office.
Hi, Adam. Go ahead.
Please excuse um any noise. I am at the Hawaii State Association of Counties um exact annual conference right now. Um, my phone is at uh six percent, so I will be signing off right after this quick report. Um, this year's theme is Leading with Aloha. Counties can gain insights from each other and speakers. Today's uh speakers talked about Hawaii's economic outlook. That was done by Justin Tindell, uh an economics professor at UH. We also had a short-term rental um uh debate um on Aloha Avenue, the new bus route. Uh, I just did want to say that uh DTS uh Director Roger Morton and Deputy Director did speak at uh the Diamond Head Kapo Hulu St. Louis Heights Neighborhood Board. I can request, um Mark, Director Wong and I can um speak with DTS and uh get them to come to the next neighborhood board um to speak with the Kamaki Neighborhood Board. I believe um Aloha does uh split the border between both of your boards. Um, from my knowledge, on this new bus route, it was to help increase service to KCC. There's a partnership with the school for either free or reduced um fare for the students. Uh, DTS is reevaluating and and considering the community's feedback uh they have received so far. And DTS is also looking into address um the speeding and traffic concerns. Um, with that, I'm happy to bring back any questions um to Chair Waters, or maybe I can answer them myself as well.
Right, thanks very much, Adam. Any questions for Adam, Chair Waters' office?
Well, hey, Adam, it's Paul. Quick question. Is there a way that the community can directly voice their concerns to DTS? Is there like an email or they can contact your office, say to say that out loud?
Oh, no. Yes, please. I'm, we always welcome um feedback directly uh to us. You can uh contact uh Chair Waters at tommy dot waters at hongolulu dot G O V, or you can uh contact their office at seven six eight five zero zero four. Thank you.
Right, great. Thanks, Adam. Any other questions for Chair Waters' office? Okay, none. Thank you very much, Adam. Appreciate it. Thanks for all the updates. Okay, so Councilmember Calvin Sees office, we did receive an email from Pua of uh Councilmember Calvin Sees office with updates and his newsletter. So thank you for that. Uh, we'll move on to Governor Josh Green's representative. Is Amanda Stevens on?
Hello, everyone. Hello, Chair, the board and the community. Thank you so much. Um, earlier in the meeting, I I just wanted to make sure I had connectivity. I did um share the Hawaii Department of Education to restore fourteen additional school bus routes, routes in central Oahu, east Hawaii, up country Maui. Um, that I just, I hope, I'm hoping you all can see that. And Becky, to address your question um from last month, I'm thinking that um council members, representative might have answered some of your questions, but I would like to get specific streets, if that's okay with you. I know it's Mauna Loa. Um, I'm not sure what the cross street was. And I think that was for safety for um for our keiki who are crossing the street, right? So I just wanted to know if you could um put in the chat the exact question. I I don't know if it was, were there city bus routes, but that was, that was the traffic that's coming down that would be diverted. And um I think we were looking at safety for children. Um, so if you can add that in later.
From last month?
Yeah. So I was trying to um follow up on that one. But um what I did get from DOE is, is the press release, but that really doesn't cover the Kamaki Kapo Hulu areas. It's more central Oahu, but I thought that might be of, you know, some interest as well. Um, I I also included the newsroom from Governor Green, um the latest news releases, as well as the newsletter. Thank you.
Amanda, um the Mauna Loa is, that was from a month ago? Could you clarify the problem there?
I believe we were.
The school, the school cross, the school.
School crossing and the traffic and.
School pickup, yeah.
Correct, school pickup and um like um some new instructions. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much, Amanda. Um, any questions for Amanda, the governor's office? Okay, oh, Becky.
Yeah, sorry, Amanda. I I was like blanking on Mauna Loa. I'm like, oh, leave, leave.
Don't worry.
Yeah, um, right. Um, so my recommendation, because it's a two-way street on Ninth Avenue, and cars are parked on both sides of the street, and it's kind of hard to see where the spaces are. We pull over and let someone go. And um I I I just feel like, or maybe if you just had one side street parking or something during the hours when the flow is going, if if we could double the speed that the flow goes on Ninth Avenue by reducing one direction of traffic during those hours, I I feel like that could help because that, you know, or or mimicking what they do on Eighth Avenue, on Ninth Avenue with the drop-off bays. Because I've been stuck on Ninth because like people don't, can't get out of the way and they're trying to pick up a kid. And and it's just like a gridlock. Um, but if we just get rid of one lane of parked cars during a certain hour, I think that it would, it would, I mean, that's just my experience after dropping off both my kids there over the years, but I don't ride the bus. So I don't, I don't know how that would work. But that's just one thought.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, Becky. Thanks, Amanda. Appreciate all the updates. So we will move on to uh State Senator Stanley Chang's office or his representative.
Hi, um, hi, I'm too soon from Senator Chang's office. Um, I put some links in the chat. First is Senator Chang's newsletter for the month of September. You can find it on senatorchang.com. I also put a link for his housing newsletter that you can sign up for. And and for any board members online, you can also sign up um to the housing newsletter on his website, senatorchang.com. And then for the updates for this month, registration is now open for the two thousand twenty-four Children and Youth Summit, which is taking place on October ten. Young people twenty-four and under can share their thoughts with the legislature on ways to improve the quality of life for youth in Hawaii. And you can register at hawaiecys.org. Um, and also the judiciary has mailed their twenty twenty-five juror questionnaires to select Hawaii residents. So if any of you received it, please do complete it and return it as soon as possible to avoid facing a penalty. And if you have any questions, you can call the judiciary at eight zero eight five three nine four three six zero. And I'll put that number in the chat as well. And I'm happy to take back any questions.
All right, thanks, Teresa. Any questions for Senator Chang's office? If not, thank you very much, Teresa. Appreciate it. Um, so we'll move on to State Senator Lesihara. Is Senator Hara online? Okay, uh, so we'll move on to State Representative Bertrand Kobayashi. Is Representative Kobayashi or is Representative online? Okay, so we'll move on to State Representative Jackson Sayama, Representative.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Uh, nice to see you. Uh, for my update, a few weeks ago, I just came back from Japan uh from the governor's delegation to Tokyo, Hiroshima, Ehime, and Fukuoka. Uh, this was a delegation to visit the sister state relationships that Hawaii possesses with Japan. Uh, we attended the Tokyo Gift Show, uh in which thirty-five Hawaii local businesses were able to attend to promote to the wholesalers in Japan. Uh, while we did not have any Kamaki businesses attending this year, maybe hopefully in the future, uh some of the Kamaki businesses would be interested in attending and going to Tokyo. Uh, others, uh, we went to Fukuoka to sign an MOU uh about the One Health Initiative. This is a policy that encourages the sustainable uh coexistence and and uh, I guess, encouraging different health policies of both environment, human, and animals. And so this is something that the state is encouraged uh by the Fukuoka government to uh coordinate with the University of Hawaii as well. Um, Anuenu and Palolo uh also has a sister school relationship with a school in Fukuoka. So, you know, uh, there is continued uh engagement on the education front, but we hope to do that uh beyond uh education as well as to business and, of course, cultural exchanges. In October, Fukuoka is hosting the Hawaii Festival, in which uh several Halaus are going to be traveling to Fukuoka to perform a Hula there as well. Um, finally, I just finished a meeting with the Hemic Oversight Council. Uh, so I'm the chair of the council, which oversees the Hawaii Employees Mutual Insurance Corporation, which provides um insurance, uh last resort market insurance uh for local businesses in Hawaii. Uh, basically, it's an annual report and everything is okay on that front. And I'll be sending the governor a signature stating so uh by the end of October. Uh, with that, I believe I am open to questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Representative. Any questions for Representative Sayama? All right, thank you very much. Oh, oh, you got a question back there. Go ahead.
It should, uh, do we, sure, I mean, I definitely have my two cents. Um, I would be happy to go into depth in detail, but very briefly, since I know we are running out of time, I would encourage board members and the general public to consider the logistical issues and the financial burdens that some of these policies incur. Overall, I'm very supportive of them. Um, after being a legislator for four years, I generally believe that the session goes by way too quick, that there is realistically no time for the public at large to weigh in, to consider these uh policies that we vote on. And even for legislators ourselves, it's goes by very quick and it's very difficult to keep track of. Overall, I would recommend that, you know, if we want all these transparency policies, we also need to extend the length of the session. Uh, there is no way our staff, no matter, and I know how hard they work, no matter how hard they work, they can't uh process the testimony in time to publish it twenty-two hours in advance. Um, yeah, it it just needs, we need more time. Uh, and so I would encourage you to take a look at that as well and consider that uh when we vote next month. But if you have more questions about that, I could definitely go into more detail with each policy.
All right, any other questions for Representative Sayama? If not, thank you very much, Representative. Appreciate the updates. All right, so uh we'll move on to Congressman Ed Keys or his representative, anybody online? Okay, no. All right, uh, uh, any announcements from anyone on the board? Nope. Okay, so board business. The one item on board business we have is approval of the August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four written summary of video record. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to take a look at that. Um, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that. It's been moved. Is there a second? Okay, moved and seconded. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that is approved. Uh, reports, members attendance at other meetings. Does anybody have any attendance at other meetings to report? Okay, if not, the next meeting of this board is on Wednesday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty PM, right here at the Kamaki Library and remotely via WebEx. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody, for attending.